I think we're all set, guys. There we go. Okay. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the workshop. And let's start with the agenda. First, or second item, I guess, is the approval of the minutes. Everyone have a chance to look at those? Can I make a motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Applications tonight, we have two. Any questions or anything for clarity purposes?
One question I had about Starbucks.
Yeah.
Should this all be falling under this grants sign package that when we talked about the area, is this parcel really part of that? Or is this, I mean, that's the first thing I thought about when I saw this. I said, you know, we're seeing variances for other businesses that are in the Baytown Plaza that developed a whole entire sign package. Did it big present, like, we spent a lot of time doing it.
Sure. And they did, too.
We see something like, you know, then we see more sign applicants come in for other variances on top of what we kind of said. This was the standard and we're kind of hold you by it.
I guess another way to put it is within the sign package you accomplish. What are we not hearing as a result of?
Yeah, I don't recall the design package conversation being so much about individual businesses as it was the plaza, you know, directionals, the three big signs out there. But is anybody here from the owner tonight or gonna be? Is Paul gonna be here?
I don't know.
But let's have him in. You know, let's get him in a work session. If you guys would be okay with that and say, gee, you know, I mean, obviously, we want more tenants and we want more business. Everybody does. But these are fair questions.
I mean, it was pitched to us that we wouldn't have to do every applicant individually.
Yeah, I recall that as well. Now, this is a new building and, you know, so this particular one I see is set aside from that, but I think those are fair questions and let's ask.
Is all this together? Because I don't recall seeing directionals there yet and we've spent so much time on those.
Oh, they're not up.
Yeah, they're not up. It's been a year.
Yeah, well, it's all about Mr. Green showing up. Remember that? You've, of course, Mr. Green hasn't yet showed up. Oh, gosh, the good old days. Okay, so anything else on tonight's? And no table applications, if I remember correctly. So I think we're good for the work session. You got something, Mike?
No, I'm just wondering, were you guys discussing something before with regard to the expansion of the lease on number two?
Just briefly, I just had a question for Andy.
Okay.
It seems more technical than actual.
Yeah, yeah. But fair enough. We've done that before.
Sure.
Okay, well, then, we will adjourn the work session, take a 21-minute break, and start the public hearings. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to a regularly scheduled meeting of the Penfield Zoning Board of Appeals. Tonight's meeting will take place in two parts. The first part will be the public hearings. We'll ask the applicant to come up to the podium and give us name and address, and then explain to the board why the relief being requested should be granted. After the applicant is finished with the presentation, we'll ask if there's anyone in the audience that cares to come up and do the same thing, give us name and address and speak about the application. Once the presentation and any other interested parties are finished, the public hearings will be adjourned, we'll take a brief recess, and we'll reconvene in the back of the room to deliberate on the applications. Members of the public are welcome at both the public hearings and the deliberations, although that time generally is reserved for conversations amongst board members, board members with staff, or occasionally with our council. Tonight's agenda is short, I'd say, two items. But of course, as I've already said, you're welcome to stay for both sessions if, for whatever reason, you don't want to stay. You can call tomorrow Christine or Andy and ask what action, if any, the board took on a particular item. Each month, we like to point out that we think the town does a good job of notifying neighbors and citizens in the town that applications are going to be heard, and the town does that so people are more fully informed of their right to come in and talk about the applications. We appreciate when people do that because it makes, it helps us do our job better, we think. So town does that by sending postcards to neighbors that live in the area, by having applicants post signs that the application is on. Oh, you want to take that?
Yeah.
And posting the agenda on the website, stuff like that. So we think it works well, and of course, we welcome any comments. And with that being said, I'd ask everyone to rise and join me in Pledge of Allegiance. Maybe we should do it twice this month.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Great. Thank you very much, and may we have the first application, please?
Edward Hershey, Sign and Lighting Services, 530 Route 104, Ontario, New York, 14519. On behalf of Starbucks, request a special permit under Section 250-10.3-A of the code to allow greater building-mounted signage than permitted under Section 250-10.13-C of the code, signage with greater graphics, trademarks, or logos than permitted under Section 250-10.11-E of the code, and greater traffic control signage than permitted under Section 250-10.17 of the code at 1900 Empire Boulevard. The property is currently or formerly owned by DeMarco Baytown Associates, LLC, and his own general business. SBL number 093.02-1-23.111, application number 20Z-0002.
Good evening.
Hi.
My name is Edward Hershey. I'm with Sign and Lighting Services of Ontario, New York, and I've been asked from Starbucks to represent their sign package for their new building in Baytown Plaza. What we're asking for, I know it's considered eight total signs, but their standard package with the logo, which they call a siren, with the drive-through arrow underneath it is considered one sign in their terms because it designates a drive-through location. If it didn't have the sign underneath the logo, it would be just a cafe. So that's how they designate their sign itself. I know it's eight individual signs, but two corners, two elevations have the location or with the siren with the drive-through, and then there's also one over the drive-through for the people. We're also asking for two individual sets of channel letters that read Starbucks. One would be facing the east towards the Burlington where there's a sitting area, and then the other one would be facing the D'Belles, which would be facing north. We are asking for directional signs, I believe, three drive-through signs, roughly three square feet each, and a thank-you exit only, which is roughly 2.6 square feet as you leave the
Can you explain to us why you think you need this many signs, however signs are defined, as opposed to would like them?
Right. Well, this does sit in behind the Key Bank and the McDonald's. So definitely, we'd want to attract, and it does if you see the footprint of how you drive into the, you come in the main entrance, and if you don't want to hit that access road, so you're going to look straight ahead and see a directional that's going to point you in the right direction. But if you didn't see that right away, you would be able to see the Starbucks and the corner siren facing the west. So that would definitely be a must-have. The other would be if you're coming in off a Creek Street entrance, I believe there's an ATM kiosk that sits in front of the building or will sit in front of the building. That drive-through with the siren would also want, you know, you'd want the traffic to know that that's the Starbucks because that's the end of the building you would see coming in from that entrance. Starbucks thought that facing the Burlington through the open parking lot, if someone was to come in through the back entrance, I believe there's a brewery, brew pub, as you get to that corner, you would then see the building, you would see the drive-through with the siren from that point. It does kind of sit all by itself. They thought they'd try to maximize as much signage as possible to get at all the points. You know, that's what they'd like me to present to you and see what kind of feedback.
And do you, are you able to answer questions about operational issues?
No.
Okay.
As far as?
Well, why don't we give it a go anyway, right?
Sell coffee.
Yeah, well, I guess what I'm wondering is, you know, you look at the drawings here and there's a whole bunch of cars in the drive-through. Any idea what percentage of customers use the drive-through versus park and go in and...
I couldn't give you an educated answer on that.
In that location, it seems to me, and I'm in that plaza all the time, that there will be cars coming to that location from, really, from all directions.
That's correct.
So concerns that I have that may in some part be addressed by the signage are safety for drivers that are going to Starbucks and those that aren't, but are having to deal with people that are going, and then also pedestrians as well. So I get the need for a sign for safety purposes. I just wonder whether you need this much to accomplish that purposes in addition to just marketing and letting people know. Do you know whether Starbucks is going to be in any of the pylon signs or, Alan, I don't know if you know that or not?
I don't.
Can you come up and, if you don't mind?
My name's Alan Rainbow and I work for DeMarco, and we're the landlord for the shopping center. To answer your question, Dan, there is call for Starbucks to be located on the main monolith sign. The main sign as you come into the plaza, I don't believe there's any call for them to be on any of the other three plaza entry signs, just on the monolith sign.
Okay.
And they're going to be right at the lower level of the center of the sign.
And how much of this, the building will be visible from Empire Boulevard, let's say, to start?
Visible.
I mean, I'm on Empire Boulevard, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I'm on Empire, I can see McDonald's and see it pretty well. I can see Key Bank, which just spent a lot of money redoing their building. I'm just wondering how much you're going to be able to see this building and the signs from Empire and, I guess, from Creek as well?
Yeah, and that is a bit of a concern because you do have the two buildings out front between McDonald's and Key Bank. You also have the monolith sign, which is quite large in size, and then the entryway is very well landscaped with trees on the way in. So visually, you're just going to see it for little cuts, you know, and angles through the obstructions. It's not going to be extremely visible until you actually enter the shopping center and then it'll pop in front of you, but...
Yeah, and again, you know, I would ask, how much of the business do they expect to be from people that are already in the plaza? Oh, jeez, we're here, let's get a cup of coffee, versus people driving by and if it's only going to be on the one pylon sign, maybe being able to see it when they're at that light at Creek and Empire and say, oh, let's then decide to go get a cup of coffee.
Yeah, and I think there'll be a strong mix between the two, maybe 50/50.
Okay. Okay, any other questions from the board?
I guess, I mean, some of the things that I look at is, I mean, our code allows, you know, a certain number of billy mound signs and then freestanding signs and things like that, and I look at it and I see this is, you know, it seems pretty excessive, and I know the plaza and the owners are aware of this, these kind of things because that's why we had the big sign package, the big meetings. And I still come back to, you know, how much of this was mitigated already or reduced based on conversations with the landlord saying, hey, you know, we've worked on a sign package with the town, this is kind of the expectations going forward as a tenant here? Because honestly, to me, it doesn't look like any of that was really taken into consideration. I know this is a separate building and things like that, but it feels like this is quite, you know, this is quite a bit. So I'm just curious what kind of conversations were, you know, in terms of, you know, between the tenant and the landlord saying, hey, you know, there is, you know, concerns about signage and things like that in this plaza. And we've worked through a lot of, I mean, we spent months and months and months doing that.
Right. I do know that one of the focuses was on trying to keep total square footage of the signage on the building to keep that under a certain level, and that's why you'll see the lettering and such as a little bit smaller than you might normally see, that I think they originally wanted to start with. But they felt that having exposure, having that on every side of the building was more important than sheer size on one or two sides of the building. So they went with more signs that are smaller in size.
And to follow up on what Andres was saying, and it's more for Alan, honestly, than the applicant, it'd be, we think we'll probably invite the owner landlord to come in to a future meeting and sort of do a follow-up on the sign package there, see where we are and what we may expect in the future, what other applications, because I think we were thinking, not that we were done, but that a lot of that had been addressed with the sign package. True, this is a new construction, a completely new building from the ground up, so we understand that, but just so you know, if your phone rings and the caller ID says Penfield Town Hall, you know what it's about.
Alert everybody in the office.
Okay, all right, good. Yeah, go ahead, guys.
No, I was just going to say, I mean, we seem to be getting this more and more, particularly with bigger companies. You come in, the sign people come in, and that's the package that the company wants, okay, which is fine, but you're asking for an exception for the requirements of our code, and unless you can come up with reasons for that, just the fact that that's what Starbucks or any company wants isn't sufficient in my mind to justify, you know, giving three or four times the number of, or three or four more signs than are normally required and larger signs at that. I mean, directional signs are meant to be directional. The company wants them bigger, I know, it's nice, but do they need to have them bigger? Is what I'm saying.
Yeah, especially when you look at the directional signs on the side of the building, wrapping around the building, you know, usually it's a little small sign on the street saying, go this way, as opposed to arrows and drive-through that wrap around the entire building.
Right. That's kind of where I was going to ask about. I just wanted to make sure I was understanding the application correctly, the drive-through signs that are attached to the building. How many of those are there that you're proposing? I'm just not seeing it easily, sorry.
Three.
And you need, really need three, you think?
Yeah, and, you know, you may be...
Again, it's...
It's tough for you...
It's tough for me because it is a freestanding building.
Yeah.
And I know the visibility is going to be an issue.
Yeah.
Until you're in that plaza. And I think they're just trying to capitalize on getting the attention from any direction because of the way it does sit, it's sitting longwise, basically, where you're only seeing the end of the building from Empire Boulevard. It's not sitting parallel to Empire, it would be sitting perpendicular.
But what about, you know, rather than having the signs on the building, I mean, there are striping you could do on the driveway, right, to get people in line? I mean, I'm thinking about the McDonald's next door.
Yeah, the, again, because it sits in its own, it's not part of the main roadway.
Right. I hear that it's setback, but wouldn't the siren alone just kind of say, yeah, there's a Starbucks here?
I could present that.
Yeah, I think, I'm leaning toward making a motion to table on this one because you're not in position, no fault of your own, to answer some of these operational questions. And the other thing is, I think I'd like to get some information from the town engineer, perhaps, about the traffic flow and, because there are safety concerns, and I want to make sure that if some of these additional signs are needed to aid safety in the opinion of the town engineer, that's something that would be important to me in deciding what, because the request is, there's a, there are a lot of signs being asked for here. We all get that, we understand. We also then, I'd like some more information to follow up on what we did with McDonald's, what we did with Key Bank, what we did with Chili's, because they all came in asking for a lot, too, and I don't think they got everything they asked for. So comparisons may be helpful to us in that regard as well. So any info that you can obtain that helps in the argument of safety, or, as Mike said, need versus desire would be helpful as well. And we often ask applicants, okay, well, you're asking for eight, we're thinking more like five, which five would you like? So that sort of information or prioritization, maybe is a better word, I think it would be good to see you then, next meeting as well. Any other thoughts?
I would agree with that.
Okay, any other words of wisdom? Okay, well, then, thank you. Anybody in the audience care to speak about this? Okay, thanks, fellows.
Thank you.
We'll probably see you again next month.
Get you back.
Hope you guys don't mind.
No, I was going to get the charge of doing that. You also did not hit her.
Yeah, and he's...
Table.
All right, next application?
Albert Pelucio, Jr., Rochester Flooring Kitchen and Bath Incorporated, 360 Jefferson Road, Rochester, New York, 1463. On behalf of Jeff Jennings, Jennings-Nolton Funeral Home, request a conditional use permit under Section 250-13.3 and Section 250-5.5-C1B of the code, and an area variance under Section 250-14.3 of the code to allow a deck with less side setback than required under Section 250-5.5-D3 of the code at 1704 Penfield Road. Property is currently or formerly owned by JRM Properties, LLC, and his own business, non-retail. SBL number 103.05-1-47, application number 20Z-0003.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Albert Pelucio from Rochester Flooring Kitchen and Bath. This is my nephew, David Pelucio. We are proposing to put a deck on for the Jennings at the Nolton Funeral Home. And I believe you have the drawings.
Yep.
Existing garage is about 18 feet away from the main structure. We would not be coming out past that. It would be a 12-foot deck. Right now, it's a four-foot.
Okay, why a deck? Why do you need a deck on that?
The Jennings are looking to sell their home and move to this premise permanently. So they're wanting to have a deck on there.
They're not living there now?
No.
Is it occupied at all?
No, it's actually, we have a permit with you folks. We're doing construction in there now, the interior.
It's being remodeled?
Mm-hmm.
Is that overhang going to be removed? There's some type of an overhang on that side?
Yes.
That's coming off?
That it will be coming off, yep.
Okay, and can you describe the type of materials this is going to be?
A trucks-like composite product.
For the floor?
Wooden? A composite product, not wooden.
Oh, composite on the sides and the entire thing? Stairs as well?
Yes.
Same color as the residence?
The exterior is white. Have they picked a color?
They have not picked a color.
No, they have not picked a color, I'm aware of. I would, I don't want to speak for them, but I, it's obviously going, I don't think it's going to be white. I would probably say more in a gray tone, but I don't want to speak for Robin.
Well, that might make a difference because visually, obviously, it would, so that you don't have that information.
No.
You're talking about the overhang?
No, I'm talking about the deck itself.
They make white? They make a white color?
They do, I just, I'm, again, I could...
No, no, you can't speak for them. I didn't even know they made it. I guess I do.
I mean, there's going to be railings and...
Oh, railings, sure, yeah, 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 yeah.
The railings will be white, but the deck, the floor...
Oh, no, that's, I'm sorry, then I didn't make it clear.
Yeah, I would...
That's what I was talking. Yeah, I mean, the deck, the sides of the stairs...
Yes.
Going to be the same color.
The spindles and the railings will all be white.
Got you. Okay, I'm glad we clarified, Dan.
Sorry about that.
Oh, it's my fault, I didn't ask the question right. So it's actually coming out less, it's going to be less intrusive than what's already there, correct? The garage is closer to that sideline. All right, for the record, could you just give me a general overview of the surround, the land surrounding? What's on the adjoining property?
To the west?
Yes, to where the deck is going.
Is that the driveway going up to the nursing home?
Yeah, and so, and the rest of that space immediately across from that house to the west is pretty much open?
Correct.
Is that correct?
Yes.
So, but it is visible to the nearest business as well as the nursing home in the back, right?
Yes.
Okay. And generally, this is, there's residents, there's just like almost mixed, right, in that neighborhood? There's some apartments, but...
Yeah, there's apartments across the street, there's the assisted living nursing home up on the hill, restaurants across the street.
All right, and this is going to be used for their personal use?
Yes.
The Jennings?
Yes.
And how many people are going to reside there? Do you know that?
Two.
Just the two, just two of them? Okay. So there's, and there's no commercial use involved in this, correct?
No.
Okay, and I'm thinking, as to the conditional use permit, most of the criteria that we have to look at impacts commercial, it's obviously for commercial. So unless you want to add something there, I don't really think that those questions are relevant or need to be addressed, so...
No, strictly for their residential use.
Okay. That's all the questions I have.
All good questions.
How about illumination, with the post caps or rails have illumination to them?
No, the only lights right now that we had been talking about is I have two doors leading out to the deck, and I think by code, I would have to have two lights by each of those doors.
But you could have lights on the outside even if you didn't have a deck that people can't help already, I would assume, so...
So the addition of the two lights by the exterior door, leading out from the master bedroom and the living area, because there's two entrances to that. Thank you.
Anything else?
No.
Anyone in the audience? Okay, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Okay, so that hearing will be closed and we will take a brief reset. Do we need a recess?
30 seconds.
We don't need a recess, so as long as it takes us to walk from here to there. Thank you all very much. Are we good? Let's see where we are. Good? Okay. With, if we're going to table, I just, seeker first or...
You don't need to do seeker if you're going to table, no. Just what you've got to remember next time.
Yep. Number one that I'm going to make, for tonight, I'm going to make a motion to table for the reasons discussed at the hearing, get some more information from the applicant regarding the need for safety, the signs as they relate to safety, and then also come back with a prioritization of signs with the clear leaning of the board that this is a very substantial request. So I'd make a motion to table for those, and also the town, get information from the engineering department about the traffic flow and whether there's a recommendation on this application as well.
Second... Second.
Can we get some kind of overview too, as to where those signs are going? I know they have, we have them on the building face, but where the directionals are in relation to where the building is?
You guys getting all that, I mean, you're welcome to come up here and sit if you'd like.
There's three directionals on the building.
Okay.
I think one of the renderings...
It wants to say drive-through, like, if you look at the picture, actually, the picture of the arrows and drive-through, those are being considered directional, which sometimes I'll question that a little bit too, but I always picture directional as like a free, no, I mean, not freestanding, but like a directional sign in traffic as you're driving, like, entrance, exits, those are always things I kind of consider as directional.
So, I have a question, they were saying that the siren with the drive-through, is this considered a single sign?
They consider it a single sign.
They consider, but we don't consider it a single sign.
No. The siren a single sign.
Right.
The drive-through a sign.
Okay.
And that's, their position is really not unreasonable, but it's just not the way it is here.
Right, right.
So, nor is the town's. So, did you guys, did you guys get all that? The reasons that you're confident you have your mission and, okay, cool. All right, then I've made the motion to table, I think we had a second.
Did you, did you get a print of where the directionals were going?
Yeah, one of the renderings has like an overview, that, that, there's like a key that shows you all the different signs and where they're going.
Yes, so, yes.
Okay.
All right, so we have a motion to table for the reasons stated, a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, let's go to, thank you, by the way.
Thank you.
Alan, whatever happened with the diner? Do you know?
The sunny side or whatever it is still? Long gone.
Ah, too bad, too bad.
Long gone, they, they wound up developing a small, it was a house conversion out on West Henrietta Road, couple of thousand square feet, so that's got their focus now. What they do after that, we'll see how that goes, I guess, so...
Okay, well, I'm kind of looking forward to that.
Yeah, we all were, but...
You know how I like my breakfast. All right, thank you, good seeing you. Number two.
All right, do you want to make a seeker motion that this is a type-two action or no further will be required?
Second.
All right, seeker motion made by Mike, declared a type-two action, seconded by Andres, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Okay, first, for the conditional use permit, this is, I guess, an expansion technically of the, at least the structure, if not the use slightly, but it's de minimis, and I would make a motion to, to grant the conditional use permit to include this deck as well as the existing residence in the funeral home.
I'll second it.
Okay, so we want to take a vote on that? Okay, we have a motion to approve the request for a conditional use permit, and we have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, as to the, the variance, they're looking for a setback of eight feet where 20 is required, so a 12-foot variance. It's substantial, but not, given the, the layout of the lots and in relation to the other lots, there's a lot of empty space there, it is not going to look out of place for the structure, although I don't see any other outside decks, there's not a lot of structures with two-level residences in that area either. So, I think it, it'll still fit in well with what's there, I don't think it's going to have a detrimental effect on existing properties and no environmental effects, so for those reasons, I would move to approve.
I'll second it.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve the request for a variance for the reasons stated, and a second. Motion by Mike, seconded by Andres, any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so, that takes care of both applications for tonight. Any other business on the agenda? All right, then, thank you very much, we will stand adjourned until the next meeting, which is sometime in March. Have a good night.
Night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll go on.